Okay, I'd like to call this meeting of your Newark City Council order. Bottoms is color roll.
Mr. Marmee.
Here.
Mr. Raff.
Here.
Mr. Roletta.
Here.
Mr. Blake.
Here.
Mr. Bub.
Here.
Mr. Cost.
Here.
Mrs. Floyd.
Here.
Mr. Guthrie.
Here.
Ms. Hall.
Here.
And Mr. Johnson.
Here.
All right, we are all here this evening. Next on the agenda, we have the invocation by Mrs. Floyd followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please, Rock.
Would you bow your heads, please? Almighty God, we thank you for the opportunity to be here and make the decisions that affect the citizens of Newark and affect many of our workers as well. We ask that you be with us as we make these decisions. We ask that as the warmer weather and sometimes the stormy weather hits Newark, that you be with our citizens and help guide and protect them. We ask that you be with us as we make decisions facing Newark tonight. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Do you want me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mrs. Floyd. Next on the agenda this evening, we have caucus. That's a time for council to discuss anything that they'd like to discuss about the agenda this evening. Do we have any? Seeing nothing. Next, we have the minutes of our June 1st, 2015 meeting. Do we have a motion to accept those?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Raff. Second by Mr. Johnson. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. That passes. Thank you. Next, we have three reports of standing committees, one from finance, one from service, and one from capital improvements. Without objection, those will be received and filed. We also have two reports this evening from city officials, one from Steven Johnson, our auditor, the operating report for the period ending May 31st, 2015, and one from Barb Jobes, the income tax revenue reports ending May 15th, 2015, and May 31st, 2015. Without objection, those will be received and filed. We have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 communications this evening as they are listed there. Without objection, those will also be received and filed. Next on the agenda this evening, we have comments from citizens. There's two places for citizens' comments, one's now and one is after the legislation. Again, this is not a debate with council. This is just an opportunity for you to come up and have your opinion heard. Do we have anything from anyone? Next, we move on to ordinances on the first reading. We have ordinance 15-15.
Ordinance 15-15 by Mr. Cost and Mr. Marmee, an ordinance annexing certain territory generally described as being 47.211 acres, more or less located in Newton Township to the city of Newark, Ohio.
15-15 will be held for a second reading. Next, we have 15-17.
Ordinance 15-17 by Mr. Cost and Mr. Marmee. This is an ordinance to provide for the issuance of $6,600,000 of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose refunding outstanding bond anticipation notes previously issued for the purpose of paying the cost of capital improvements, including Fire Station Number One improvements, including demolition, professional design and property acquisition, City Hall parking improvements, service complex construction improvements, and South Second Street bridge repair, together with additional Fire Station One improvements, Phase One, additional funds for Fire Station improvements, and all necessary appurtenances thereto in declaring an emergency.
15-17 is an emergency. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Blake.
Move to adopt 15-17.
Motion by Mr. Blake.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion on 15-17? Seeing none, I'll please call the world to vote.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Raff.
Yes.
Mr. Roletta.
No.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie.
No.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
15-17 passes eight to. Next, we have resolutions on the second reading, 15-52.
Resolution 15-52 by Mr. Blake, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmee. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of Numiscible Corporation.
You've heard the second reading of 15-52. What is your wish?
Mr. President, Mr. Blake, move to adopt 15-52.
Motion by Mr. Blake.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cost. Any discussion on 15-52? Seeing none, I'll please call the world to vote.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Raff.
Yes.
Mr. Roletta.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
And Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
15-52 passes 10-0. Next, on the second reading, we have 15-54.
Resolution 15-54 by Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmee. This is a resolution for the project that consists of constructing a new interchange over State Route 16 to replace the current at-grade intersection with Cherry Valley Road lying within the city of Newark.
You've heard the second reading of 15-54. What is your wish?
Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to adopt 15-54.
Motion by Mr. Cost, second by Mr. Raff. Do we have any discussion on 15-54? Seeing none, I'll please call the world to vote.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Raff.
Yes.
Mr. Roletta.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
And Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
15-54 passes 10-0. Next, we have resolutions on the first reading, 15-57.
Resolution 15-57 by Mr. Cost and Mr. Marmee. A resolution appropriating and disappropriating monies for the current expenses of Numiscible Corporation.
You've heard the first. Mrs. Floyd.
I'd like to make a motion to waive the two-day.
Motion by Mrs. Floyd to waive the two-day reading rule. Second by Mr. Cost.
There's an employee payout there, so.
Thank you, Mrs. Floyd. I'll please call the world to vote on waiving the two-day reading rule.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Raff.
Yes.
Mr. Roletta.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
No.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie.
No.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
15-57 waiving the two-day reading rule passes eight to two. Mrs. Floyd.
Make a motion to adopt 15-57.
Motion by Mrs. Floyd. Second by Mr. Cost. Is there any other discussion on 15-57?
Mr. President.
Mr. Guthrie.
Mr. President, this is difficult for me to talk about because I know that it's going to sound personal and it's not. However, this payout, I really just found out today that it is for the police chief who is being rehired. And I know that we've done these kind of things before. We did it actually for Mr. Loomis when he retired and came back to work. But in his case, the administration reduced a lower salary or negotiated a lower salary. In this case, and I think it's everybody needs to understand, first, I want to make very clear, we have a good, a great police chief. I think he's going to be outstanding. And I think it was a good hire by this administration. But here we are with a tight general fund budget, a $27,705 payout. The chief is coming back under contract with seven weeks vacation. Coming back under contract with seven weeks vacation, $82,000. And I believe that employees that are covered under statute, when they come back after they retire, they have to start at the bottom. So I just want to make sure everybody votes for this with their eyes wide open, that it's a $27,705 payout plus the chief starts with seven weeks vacation immediately. Now, again, this is not personal. But, you know, while we are haranguing the firefighters and some seem to be enjoying it and we're doing these kind of things, I think we really need to be looking in the mirror at our decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Anyone else? I'll please call the world to vote.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Raff.
Yes.
Mr. Roletta.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie.
No.
Ms. Hall.
No.
And Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
15-57 passes eight to two. Next, we have on the first reading, 15-58.
Resolution 15-58 by Mr. Cost. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of Numiscible Corporation.
15-58 will be held for a second reading. Next, we have 15-59.
Resolution 15-59 by Mr. Cost. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of Numiscible Corporation.
15-59 will be held for a second reading. And finally this evening, we have 15-60.
Resolution 15-60 by Mr. Cost and Mr. Marmee. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Newark to repair and submit an application to the United States Department of Justice for fiscal year 2015 cops hiring program.
15-60, Mr. Blake.
Mr. President, move to waive the two-day reading rule on 15-60.
Move to waive the two-day reading one, Mr. Blake. Second by Mrs. Floyd. Mr. Blake.
Ms. Gilkes testified in committee that there's a deadline approaching regarding this resolution, so we want to get it done as quickly as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. I'll please call the world to waive the two-day reading rule on 15-60.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Raff.
Yes.
Mr. Roletta.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
And Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Two-day reading rule has been waived, Mr. Blake.
Mr. President, move to adopt 15-60.
Motion by Mr. Blake.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any other discussion on 15-60? Seeing none, I'll please call the world to vote.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Raff.
Yes.
Mr. Roletta.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
And Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
15-60 passes 10-0. And that concludes our legislation for this evening. Thank you for your attention. Next on the agenda, we have our second opportunity for comments from citizens. Do we have anyone? Dana Crawford, 163 South Second Street.
The issue of our safety forces has come up on numerous occasions in the past year since I started attending these meetings regularly. Each time that something involving our police officers or firefighters has emerged, the debate has been contentious and appropriately so. From the fire station to our dispatchers, the city has had a lot to consider, and there is still much to discuss as this year progresses. We, the people of Newark, deserve nothing less than a prolonged debate about how best to improve safety. Of course, the key is a transparent and lengthy exchange of ideas and concerns as opposed to a hastily concocted opaque set of measures forced through with little regard for the consequences beyond what the numbers tell us. Providing for the public safety is a top priority for any community, second only to the issue of job creation. Isn't it best to listen to what our safety forces have to say about the policies which affect their jobs? Do we not owe it to them, the men and women putting their lives on the line for all of us, to ensure that they are properly equipped, adequately paid, and that they have all the help that we can possibly give? Less we forget, these people aren't merely public servants, but are citizens with concerns all the same. If anything, their dual role as an officer or firefighter and a citizen should make their input all the more valuable when considering any change in policy. Or do they cease to be a relevant member of society once they offer themselves to a life of public servitude? Yes, resources are limited, and we must utilize them responsibly. Then again, how responsible is it to trim the number of available firefighters while devoting funds to building a new fire station? Could we not have just made improvements to the current structure? How responsible is it to outsource city services to the county despite warnings, despite the warnings we are hearing from the union entrusted to represent the concerns of our officers? If all of our decisions must be guided purely by the goal of saving money irrespective of any consequences, why not just outsource all of our services to the less accountable county level of government? That would be easier, am I right? Just contract everything out to our three comfortable seemingly politically invincible county commissioners. Perhaps handing over the responsibility of paving our roads to them should be done as well, since we find it so difficult to wrestle with the tough question of whether or not to sacrifice at all in the interest of making our roadways safe for travel. Yes, outsourcing is an easy answer, and so is ignoring the pleas of our safety forces. While the easy path is tempting, our blind subservience to efficiency and avoiding asking the people to contribute anything more to the greater good is crippling this community and making us less safe in the process. No, we can't afford, as things currently stand, to make all the needed improvements. But it is this government's sacred obligation to protect the citizenry as best as you can. Simply stated, unless each elected official here is tirelessly working with our officers, firefighters, their unions, their superiors, and the community as a whole to find the best course of action, then you are being derelict in your sworn responsibilities. Partisanship matters not. Ideology matters not. All that matters is your oath of office and the fact that each of you is first and foremost a servant to we, the people. All I ask here is that you listen with a truly open mind to the valuable input of the people we entrust with protecting us and our loved ones. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana Crawford. Anyone else this evening? Mr. Moran.
Thank you. Paul Moran, 63 North Fourth Street. Couple items I'll relate to on safety here and around the city. There's a problem with sinkholes. There's one around the sewer that's expanding at 55 North Fourth Street. And we've got another one at Newton Avenue on Malvern Road, a sinkhole. They seem to be just popping up over the city here lately. I'm thankful for the one on Union Street that I mentioned, I think last year, earlier this year, that was taken care of. That pays these rental. That one has been taken care of. Thank you. There's chimneys downtown that have loose bricks where the mortar all is gone. One's at the former T-shirt Design Shop, and the chimney runs right along the alley where people walk. It's kind of a city property owner situation because they fall into the alleys. The city has to look after that, so hopefully it'll be taken care of beforehand. And also the old advocate building, there's loose bricks. That chimney too, at the back part of the building. That sits over a private parking lot there. Some other news I want to share. We've lost four more businesses. Dennis's Used Cars, Cedar Street Car Wash, Paco's Tacos, and Liberty Tax Service have all closed. You know, these small businesses are just struggling, and they just can't really pull through in these hard times, and it's hard for them to get by. You know, the city should have some type of group or committee to help promote these small businesses. I mean, we don't have a Chamber of Commerce, we don't have a welcome center. I mean, we should do something to help keep these businesses going along. We're not really doing anything for them but collecting taxes off of them, and that's it. And all the reasons that they close is retirements and illnesses as well. Have three items related to the gain at Advocate, my favorite paper to pick on. The receptionist Sally, she retired earlier this year. I don't know if anybody knew Sally. She is a really great person, pleasant, really work and deal with. I miss going in there and not seeing her anymore, but she retired. Reporter Joe Williams is now with the Gannett Chalk Coffee Gazette paper, if anyone wonders why we haven't seen him around lately. And I was informed there's at least 35 people that work in the building there now, which is way under what was there in the beginning years when we were printing the papers there. So it's kind of sad that the number has dwindled down so much at the paper. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moran. Anyone else? Mr. Decker.
Good evening. Darren Decker, 188 Alcon Drive. I was here at your last meeting and was speaking also on public safety services, and I felt like some of the people among the board here took what I had to say a little in jest, I guess. But I want to review with you some of our staffing levels. And I also want to bring to your attention that this is not a new item in the sense that it happened or started to happen two weeks ago. Starting back on May 21st of this year, staffing was at 14. And after the meeting, I shared with a couple of the council personnel a way to get on the electronic board from the 911 dispatch center to check that for themselves. But for the last week, staffing has been below what we would consider standard of 18 before Newark's fire union lost their minimum manning agreement and binding arbitration. But it has been 14, excuse me, 15 as of today. That does not count personnel that was sent to Knox County for a hazmat run and was tied up there all day. So you could probably strike three or four off of that and make it 11 for the day. 14 yesterday, 13, 12, or 16, 14, 14, 17, 15, 17, and 14. And that takes you back to the 8th of this month. While we talk about this staffing level, I also want to share with you the fact that Newark is a county seat, and they're heavily leaning on the surrounding entities to pick up the burden during this lower time of personnel resource. And in addition to that, is also a loss of income to the city of Newark. Obviously, the city of Newark has EMS billing, and I know that has been talked about when there was discussion about lower staffing levels. Because some of us would like to have more fire trucks on the road, but obviously more medics on the road provide a higher income because you can bill for those services and you do not bill for fire. From a department that does about 10,000 calls a year, and I know they stay very busy, I don't think averaging 14 people a day is sufficient for the number of calls or the population. And if you look at the number of personnel on duty compared to our census, I'm sure you'll find that those numbers fall way below a city that averages our size. I mentioned briefly previously of a house fire on Woods Avenue, and that was back on May 9th. My brother battalion chief, Dave Decker, arrived on the scene at 13:15 that day. And how long the seven minutes for the next piece of apparatus from Newark Township would have taken if it was your home sitting there burning while you watched a man in white with a radio, because that's essentially always provided with in his vehicle, to sit and videotape the house burning. And it's something to think about, I guess, the next time you maybe have a minor emergency in your homes, whether it's burning toast or maybe a small mulch fire in your backyard. As gentlemen speaks of outsourcing, I want to tell you that's exactly what you're doing, and you don't get a vote on it. When you call in the city of Heath, or you call in a Newton Township, or you call in any surrounding entity that bills for EMS, that is what you're doing. You are not only outsourcing your services that the city of Newark is paying for, but you're also outsourcing that fee for EMS billing to the tune of $600 to $800 a run. So that's something to think about when you're looking at those numbers, and that EMS billing money doesn't come back into the fire department at a very marginal rate at best. You mentioned the number of 22 on the payroll two weeks ago. You know when you hire personnel, you're going to have to give them sick time off, vacation time, pay out their sick time and vacation when they retire. I don't care how many is on the payroll. If all 22 called off today, I would expect there to be firefighters manning those trucks. And we, as the citizens of the city of Newark, empower all of you, and we have voted for you to take care of this problem. Thank you.
Anyone else this evening?
My name is Mark Fraser, 20 West North Street, Newark, Ohio. Wanted to talk to you today briefly about the public safety issue with the fire department and the concerns that I have. I would like to see a cooperative agreement between the administration and the city council. In 2014, a vote was passed, and it was a 6 to 4 vote that kind of spurred this whole situation from being around. And so I want to see a cross-party bipartisan legislation in order to see the solution be fixed. And I don't know if that involves augmenting the staff or just finding the best-case scenario of having firefighters and fire departments on ready and on call. And I know that there's a lot of budgetary constraints with this. And so as we have seen, the increase over two years of over $600,000, that is in no small part part of the problem that we see. And so what happens next year, when these raises are still in effect, and we have to renegotiate a contract, and we have to see how to balance this city's budget without cutting services and actually probably needing to increase services? And so I would like to see not an endless debate or a passing the buck for later, but actual legislation and a resolution to get this on the table. And so I thought it was very interesting, the statistics that were said, and especially about the $27,705 that is the payout of contention. And I don't see that as much as a deal breaker as a question of priorities is a $600,000 1.5% increase a year equal to a $27,000 one-time payout for a police chief that's guaranteed service for five years and has, what, 27 years of experience? I don't see those as apples to apples. I see it as apples to oranges. And so I appreciate all the work that you guys have done, and I appreciate all the statements that were made today, and I encourage you to do your best in finding a resolution that protects the safety and security of our city for the future. Thank you, guys.
Mr. McElrath. Anyone else interested in speaking?
David McElrath, 153 North 39th Street in Newark, speaking as president, IFF Local 109. Reason I'm addressing you tonight is due to staffing of the Newark Fire Department. Cross-staffing and brownouts are not in the best interest of the firefighters or the citizens. Many pundits and onlookers have given their opinions on the cause of the cross-staffing and brownouts. But let me set the record straight. The problem of inadequate numbers of firefighters available to operate Newark firehouses is one of administration. For example, June 1st, there were 23 firefighters assigned to the shift that's on duty that, not assigned to work that day, but spread between the shifts, we have 22 on one unit, 22 on another unit, and 23 on another unit. That day, that particular shift, has 23 assigned to the shift. Four were on cost-saving Kelly days. Two were on scheduled vacation days, agreed to by the city. And one firefighter was on light duty due to an injury and waiting to be returned to duty by the city's physician, company care. So you do the math, 23 minus 4 minus 2 minus 1 equals 16. There were 16 firefighters at the fire station on June 1st. Now, this staffing equation is predictable based on even the simplest understanding of how a fire department operates. It's an equation that repeats itself daily with relatively few additional factors. But even those factors are predictable and able to be budgeted for. One major component of staffing of a fire department is Kelly days. A Kelly day is a cost-savings measure in which a firefighter is not scheduled to work on a given day to bring the work week down to an average of 48 hours. That's right, an average work week that is eight hours more than any other city employee. Without Kelly days, the city of Newark would pay nearly $817,000 a year in additional salary and overtime because of the additional hours worked. Firefighters are not paid when we are given a cost-saving Kelly day. Firefighters are not paid when we are given a cost-saving Kelly day. So essentially, it's a scheduled day off to save the city money. Another component of staffing is for vacation days and expected injury and sick time. The city agreed to allow two firefighters to take vacation per day. If you have 22 firefighters assigned to each shift, you have three or four firefighters on cost-saving Kelly days and another two allowed to be off on vacation. That means you begin each shift with 16 or 17 firefighters. That 16 or 17 number does not include agreed-to injury or sick leave. The Newark firefighters are committed to public safety and as always, we welcome the opportunity to sit with council and administration to find the best manner in which to keep the public and our firefighters safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone from the administration this evening? Our Honorable Mr. Johnson?
I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Our Honorable Law Director Assassin?
I'll pass, Mr. President, thank you.
Mayor Hall?
Just want to congratulate Newark Catholic Boys softball team for winning the state championship. Good for them and we look forward to possibly having them in a few weeks here, so good stuff. Thank you, I'll pass.
You took that away from the happy Mr. President.
I know, but he can ad lib on that a little bit, that's okay.
Mr. Marne?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of things, I'll start out with a couple of comments with Mr. Moran. As far as small businesses, there is a Chamber of Commerce, by the way. Those are always at the county level though, in every county. In addition, as far as small businesses, our community development department has a program that deals with new business startups and everything and there are a lot of things and opportunities to assist them. And usually, there's other organizations that also help with networking and things like that when you're in a small business situation. So there are things that are available to assist. And also, I believe that Joe Williams is actually in for shock to not even show the coffee. So just to let you know that. Where do I start? I guess I'm going to start out with the vote for the salary for the police chief, the payout. It's one that I look at as, you know, it's in the union contract, we have to do the payout, it's a requirement. If we don't vote for that, then all of a sudden, we're in either a grievance situation or even possibly litigation because it states in the contract that that's what's available to an individual. Why would an individual not take a benefit like that, just like another individual would take a health benefit? It's the same thing. You take advantage of the benefits that are offered according to whatever the contracts are or what you're eligible for. And in this situation, the individual is eligible for it because it was voted upon in the union agreement that we pay payouts. So we have to do that. As far as the thing with the safety forces and a lot of the different things, Daniel, as far as the costs and, I firmly believe that costs has come into the picture from both sides. I mean, we have individuals who want high wages, and I use the word "high wages," higher wages than what they currently have. I don't want to say they're paying, we're paying like an exorbitant amount of money, but they want higher wages. And we have, the administration has to live within their budget. I see Mr. Johnson laugh, but Mr. Johnson always says, you know, unfortunately, we can't operate our budget in any kind of a deficit or in debt. You know, during tough times with some people, they utilize credit cards or some kind of credit and they live actually utilizing debt, but the city can't do that. So you have to live within your budget and you have to make decisions based upon that budget. Is it what we would want to do or like to do? No, it's not. We wish we had all the money in the world to be able to do what would be ideal for this community, just like you indicated about the streets. Yeah, we would love to fix every pothole, pave every street every seven to 10 years. We would love to do that, but we just cannot afford it. We would love to have numerous firefighters and numerous police officers to take care of any little need that is out there, but we just don't have the funds to do that. So we have to live within our means and we have to make decisions. And I say "we," but really, that's where the administration handles those decisions on what needs to be done in order to operate within your budget. And some of them are unpopular and, you know, they're going to be when you are in tough times. Just like in my family situation, if the budget is tight, somebody in my family is going to be unhappy because somebody is going to be without something. So that happens everywhere. It is not just the city of Newark. Those types of decisions have to be made and, you know, unfortunately, there are situations that cause it. Mr. Fraser talked about the pay raises, not only the pay raises, but also the extra week of vacation that was included in the last one, the negotiation. So now we have to pay for an additional week of vacation. That definitely multiplies and it also gives more time off, which means that we have less people to work. Hmm, just make sure that. So, all those things combined, yeah. Is there a situation? Yes. Is it grave? I really don't think so because I think the administration, the safety forces are going to do their best. There's not one firefighter or police officer out there that's going to say, you know what, I'm mad about this whole thing, I'm not going to help that citizen. And there's not one member of this administration that's going to do something that is detrimental to the citizens. They're going to do everything within their power, which means that if they have the money, they're going to spend it. There's not going to be any money left in our safety forces' budget at the end of the year, I guarantee it. We always spend all that money. And we usually sometimes even have to try to work out and find money elsewhere in order to pay for that. So our safety forces and everybody up here would agree that it is our number one priority. It always has been, but it's the toughest to try to handle and manage. It's the most expensive because we have to have good equipment for the good men and women that are on our safety forces. We have to pay good benefits and good wages in order to make sure that we have quality individuals there. But unfortunately, we don't have the revenue source to give us everything, so we have to just do our best. I think that we'll do better, we're constantly making improvements. It isn't the best of situations, but it's also not the worst. There's other communities that are a lot worse situations than we are. And I think that we're going to get better every day. We have individuals that are just fantastic and they're going to come up with great ideas, they're going to do more. And I'm not saying just the administration, I'm saying also our police officers and firefighters and everybody in those departments, they're going to do their best. Finally, I just want to say congratulations to the Newark Catholic baseball team. It was a very exciting tournament run. For those of you that did not know, the sectional tournaments that were, or excuse me, the regional tournaments that were held down in Lancaster was some of the greatest baseball that I have ever seen. Newark Catholic, the first game against Paint Valley, went nine innings in order to beat them by one run, 2 to 1. And then in the next game in the regional finals, played Berlin Highland, who is just a phenomenal baseball team. Newark Catholic faced the best pitchers, and those two pitchers in the entire state tournament that evening and they came out on top 5 to 4 in 12 innings. So in two games, they played the equivalent of three and came out victorious. And it was really exciting and just incredible that they even came out of the region. And then we're fortunate enough to continue it on for the state championship, the two games in the state championship. So it was exciting. I was very proud to be a father of one of the team members and he is tickled pink. He said, you know, all those cold days back in February, we're out there playing. He goes, it wasn't cold in Huntington that day. So it was exciting and I want to congratulate everybody that was a part of that, without a pass.
Thank you, Mr. Marne. Mr. Ratt?
Thank you. Thank you, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Ratt. Mr. Letta?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to call a safety committee meeting, but that'll pass.
Mr. Letta, Mr. Blake?
Call finance and pass.
Mr. Blake, Mr. Bub?
I'll pass, thank you.
Mr. Bub, Mr. Cost?
I need to call for a service committee meeting, but that'll pass.
Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd?
I'm going to call personnel committee. Next time, we're going to have lots of committee meetings.
I guess.
Just two comments, it was nice to be at a couple of new businesses today. Today, I must have just been eating, I went to the Trout Club for lunch. The facility just looks beautiful, I used to go there and play golf and swim and was in the restaurant and it was just beautiful today. And most of us just came over from the Park Place Bistro, which is going to open on Wednesday and I think that's going to be a great addition to downtown Newark, I'll be excited. And without a pass, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Floyd. Mr. Guthrie?
Thank you, Mr. President. I did want to say that I think the Bistro is a really nice addition to downtown and certainly wish them the absolute best, success. I wanted to address for just a minute the editorial by the advocates, but I wanted to, just one thing I want to make clear, I tried to, when I explained my vote against the payout legislation, I tried to make it clear that to me, there was nothing, there's nothing personal about it. And frankly, the issue to me is not the payout. The issue is the negotiated agreement in the future. I mean, this happened with Chief Sarver, it basically just continues to happen. And I think when Chief Sarver, who I believe retired in southwestern Ohio, came to us, he came to us with six or seven weeks' vacation. My guess is that he got a significant payout wherever he came from. He was a great chief while he was here. And so the payoff or payout, I mean, a previous administration negotiated with Mr. Loomis at a reduced salary to come in. I have no idea what they negotiated as far as vacation time, but as we're looking at, you know, cutting corners and we're seeing especially this negative stuff about the firefighters, such as this editorial, which I want to say something about here, it's just sort of mind-boggling. One thing I want to point out is sometimes when I like read that editorial, I wonder if the authors, and I know it's never the reporters, but I wonder if the authors really understand the bargaining process? Because what council was faced with, you know, there was negotiations that occurred between the administration and the fire department. Council wasn't involved in those negotiations. I mean, we're being painted, oh, by the way, the Democrat majority is being painted as if we negotiated a contract. What happened, the Fact Finder report came before council and yes, it was passed 6 to 4, okay? But what if it wasn't passed 6 to 4? It would have then gone to binding arbitration. Binding arbitration, and I've dealt with, I've been involved in collective bargaining since 1982, binding arbitration is a crapshoot. And if you study binding arbitration, you will likely find that more than half the time, the arbitrator supports the fact-finding report or better. So, so yes, the so-called Democrat majority voted 6 to 4 for that Fact Finder's report, but avoided the potential risk of what could happen in binding arbitration. And let me just say finally here, you know, this business of the Democrat majority, I know all the Republican candidates this year are just having a ball with that and Mr. Loomis is having a heyday with it. In all my years on this council, before we happened to have a majority, did you ever hear anybody walk in this door and talk about the Republican majority on council? I don't ever recall that, but now, it's all politics. I don't recall that before. I presided as president of this council and I treated a seven-member Republican, the seven members of this council Republicans, I treated them with respect. And this business, this politics business, I'm the guy who wants this city to become nonpartisan. I have pushed this, you know, in front of two charter commissions. So let the people who talk about the Democrat majority come to the well and say, hey, maybe we ought to be a nonpartisan city, like well over half the other charter cities in this state. Of course, we can't do anything now because, you know, we don't have a viable charter commission in place. Anyhow, you know, I know I'm the old crank now because I'm on my way out and I, again, it's not personal, I don't criticize other people for their votes on things, but I just periodically, I feel like I need to try to share my opinion on some of these things and maybe in just some small way, if I can plant a seed in the back of someone's mind, that this is not all politics. You know, we had to make a public policy decision on that Fact Finder's report. Now, some people can say, well, the Democrats got money from the firefighters, oh my gosh. Well, the Republicans get money from the business community, the Republicans get money from people connected to the CIC, which gets money from the city. I mean, forget that stuff. You know, are we at a point where we can't make rational judgments because someone contributes to our campaigns? How silly that is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Ms. Hall?
I'd like to call a capital improvement committee meeting and that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Mr. Johnson?
I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Just a couple of housekeeping things. There'll be no meeting next Monday, June 22nd, it's a five Monday month, so there'll be no meeting on the 22nd. Our next committee meeting will be June 29th, when we have several committees. Our next council meeting, June 29th, here in this room at 5:30. Our next council meeting will be July 6th, which is the first Monday in July at 7:00 PM. A motion to adjourn?
No.
Question by Mr. Cost, second by Mr. Ratt, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We adjourn. Thank you very much.